Putnam County School District. Will come to order. David Buster, David Buckles will say the pledge of allegiance and Ms. Sandra Gilleyard will say the invocation.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jane, do you want to go ahead and lead the pledge?
Please, Jane.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we pause today to say thank you. Thank you for your blessings of this day, God thus far. Thank you for how you watched over us, kept us safe. Oh, God, brought us into a new year. For that, we say thank you. God, we thank you for the dedication of all of our employees, God. For our teachers that go in day in and day out, we may as well say to make sure that our students get the best education possible. Thank you, oh God, for our young people that are striving for excellence. And thank you, oh God, for your blessings for keeping our families, oh God, and preparing a way, God, through means, throughout the community, feed the need, God. Covid testing, all of the things that we need, God, someone steps up and helps out. Thank you for those that were very generous during Christmas to make sure that no child did not receive something. God, now we ask for your divine guidance as we carry out and conduct the affairs of this district. We pray your blessings upon our leader, God, and upon the district personnel. God, as they make decisions and as we make decisions, God, that we feel are in the best interest of our students. Help us not to be selfish, God, but to go beyond self and be selfless and to reach out and to help one another. We ask all of this in the mighty matchless name of Jesus and the people said, amen.
Before we move forward, we want to make sure that we have a vote that allows Holly to participate in the meeting.
I'll make a motion that we allow Ms. Pickens to participate virtually.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Pickens, you're included.
You're included.
Okay. First off, we have presentations. We have the DKG mini grant winners, Ms. Tanya Whitehurst and Judy West.
Ms. Renee Hough and Judy.
Ms. Ray.
Good afternoon, board. I am standing in today for Ms. Tanya Whitehurst and she and I are part of our DKG. And today I would like to introduce Ms. Judy West, who is going to introduce our winners for our mini grants.
Thank you very much. Let's get started. Is Latoya Coleman here? All right, she said she wouldn't leave, but I'll get this to her. Is Christina Griffiths here? Come on up, please. Let me just tell you a moment about DKG. It is an international organization of active and retired teachers. Our whole purpose is to promote education and educators. So, part of our deal each year is we give mini grants to several teachers. They apply, we look over them, and this is yours to keep also. And I put it in a binder, so if you're one of those teachers that keeps all your compliments in a notebook, she's ready. And he'll give you this to take with you. And thank you so much for all you do. Can you tell everyone just briefly what your project was about?
Our project will be, I'm taking my biology students to the center of the St. Johns River with the help of the St. Johns River Riverkeeper. And we're going to take water samples and take them back to the classroom and analyze them and look at the microorganisms under the microscope.
Ooh, that sounds fun.
Awesome.
Can we get a photo when we're, after we get them all announced? Christina, can you stand up here? Yeah, come on up.
Yes, ma'am.
Be careful with Judy West. She'll cut your tie with a pair of scissors.
I will.
Yes, I've seen you do it.
Can you turn around, please, and tell the audience what your project is kind of about and the sustainability that you're going to call me? Discuss that right before the meeting.
Well, I'm going to let Ms. Glover go ahead and kind of tell about it because we have packets that I'm going to be passing out to y'all. So while she's talking, you can actually be looking at the information she's going to share.
Good afternoon. First, I would like to say thank you, thank you to the DKG committee for choosing the Crescent City High Excel program.
Thank you.
What we decided that we would like to mentor the students at Middleton Burney Elementary School. We identified a problem at the beginning of the year, and that's one of the things that the Excel program does, problem solving. So our students are constantly problem solving issues. They have with the tardy, the phone policy. So, we identified that most of our seventh and eighth grader with the combining of the schools, they are struggling to make that transition. So a lot of our students, our younger students are becoming to be frequent flyers in ISS. So what we want to do is to prepare our sixth graders about what to look for when they make that transition to high school. So it will make it an easier transition for them. As well, many of you may not know, the Excel program replaced the JFG program. So, and if you didn't know, Excel stands for Experience, Community, Employability, and Leadership. So a part of that will be our students mentoring. That will be the part of the leadership piece of them becoming future leaders for our society. So the biggest challenge that we have, because this is new to many in the district, is holding on to this program. When we share it with parents and people in the community, they love what we're doing because we are preparing our students for their post-secondary transition. So if we can get our district to really, really be on board, our principals. And personally, we feel that every senior in our high school deserves to be in this program. And again, we would like to thank you, the DKG committee, for choosing us for this mini grant.
Now Judy, you can pull your mask down for the picture.
Congratulations.
Yes, ladies, congratulations. Oh, you have one coming.
Hang on a second.
Yes.
Is she the other winner? Okay, go back up. No, stand over by the podium.
We realize that some people were.
Joy, you want, you can pull your mask if you want to for the picture.
Awesome.
Okay, now let's present to you.
Congratulations.
It's okay. Come right over here and sit here and look at everybody else. And let me give this one to them because. Okay. Can you take just a couple of sentences and tell everyone what your project is? We have two presentations and they're just wonderful. I think they need to know what Putnam County teachers are doing.
Okay. I'm Latoya Coleman and I work over at Putnam Edge High. And because of the students that we service, a lot of them are behind somewhat in their learning. And I came up with a project called Operation Ketchup. And it's actually, I have a little flyer that I'm going to give to the students that actually helps the students. We're going to work on basic math skills, current math skills, and whatever it takes in order to get them on level to pass their EOCs and end of course exams.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much. This is so much fun to be able to give a little bit of money towards some teachers who are trying to do extra rather than just their work that they have to do. This is always extra work and we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You know what I love about this is I believe all three of those teachers are homegrown Putnam County. Right, Ms. Glover?
Yes.
Yes.
And I know two, two of the teachers I had in school way back a long time ago, not too far back, but I'm very proud of you guys. I actually visited Ms. Glover's class.
Did he say he had them as a teacher? What did you say?
I had them. They were in the school I was working. Not as a teacher.
I thought you'd been a little carried away with who you had as a teacher.
Well, no, you, you and I both, we, we've had so many different students.
What are you saying?
We're going to thank the Delta Kappa Gamma Society for their award presentation.
Absolutely.
And we're going to move to the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, the PBIS.
Michael Stevens.
Michael is not here today. He, he was supposed to be doing that. I'll.
You wanted to postpone it, Randy.
Yeah, that would be great. I thought that was really, Katie, I thought that was canceled until Suzie came up to him and said she, I thought I gave her a heart attack because I wasn't in here.
We don't mind a bit.
Okay.
Okay, so we can, we can.
We'll table that.
Postpone that.
Okay.
Okay. I have more information.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
But you were ready and willing to just muddle through it, weren't you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, moving on to public comments, we do, if you did have a public comment, we asked that you fill out one of the peach cards in the back. We do have one from Janelle Kilgore. If you please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Yes, I will. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Janelle Kilgore. I am a parent and a resident here in Putnam County. My children attend Putnam County public schools. I had a couple of questions, I think like three questions. There was, is that good? Am I going to be? Okay. On, let me see where I have this. It was a question about one of the letters that were sent home recently. On December 17th, there was an email sent stating that visitors will be limited on campus beginning January 3rd. I tried to go into my son's school. He's young. And they told me that parents were not allowed in and that this decision was based on this new variant and Covid numbers. When I did my own research and checked the CDC's website, when school began, there were 10,360 deaths compared to, I think this morning I checked it, there were 61 deaths among Floridian children ages zero to 17. So I was curious, the justification to exclude parents from being on campus with the children? That's kind of my first, should I continue to the other questions or?
Please, please.
In addition to that, whenever, whenever I was denied access to it, I thought, you know, how to, how does this happen? And just an email and by what processes are new policies made? I wasn't sure. The letter said that it was a recommendation. So one of my questions are, is it a recommendation or is it a policy change? When I looked in state statutes, it said there's a process by which policies are implemented. So my second question would be, were those processes followed to make this change, if it is a policy change? And when? I don't, although I'm a resident here, I don't watch every public school board meeting. Kind of trust you guys to do your thing. Yeah, and I think that's it for now until, I mean, if you guys want to.
I would take it.
Mr. Superintendent. Would you like to respond?
Yes, because the letter.
Yeah, the letter, the letter was sent out on advice from our health coordinator based on the numbers that, the trending numbers of the Covid variant. And of course, that, that has played out to be a fact and actually.
Especially after Christmas being.
Yeah, we anticipated a spike in the numbers because of the Christmas holidays. And as of today, as a matter of fact, she just texted these numbers to me. We have 117 students that are quarantined, 68 employees. So I'm not sure if you were looking at CDC, but we, we are going by the Florida Department of Health information. And actually, our own health coordinator actually conducts the contact tracing. So again, right now, we have a number of people that are not included and we're just trying to mitigate this. This is a short-term administrative action that we are taking just to try to limit the amount of contact. And we also have issued to each of the schools, we've issued a number of mitigation measures, including, there's a number of them, but including limiting space in our after-school events and athletic activities. There, I don't have that in front of me, but there are a number of things that we're doing. Practices within the schools, just trying to make sure the numbers don't get out of hand. And of course, right now, we're just trying to cover a lot of our teacher absences because of the, the increase in numbers. We're just trying to do everything we can to limit contact for the time being. But this will not be a long-term action. It's really just over the next few weeks until the numbers begin to come down.
Okay.
And there wasn't a policy change.
No, there's not a policy.
So it's just a recommendation. So it's not an actual set and standard policy.
We have a permanent, a full-time health coordinator that is highly trained that gives us these recommendations.
Yes, sir. And so parents can respectfully dissent the recommendation and enter into the school to be with their child. If it's not a policy, is my question. If it's a recommendation versus a policy.
It's an administrative action or practice. I mean, that's based on, based on my authority as superintendent, that's what we have done. That's an action we have taken just for the health and safety of our students and our staff right now. So that, again, it's not a long-term action, but it's, it's an action that I've taken under my authority as superintendent.
And Mrs. Kilgore, today I went to Brown and Pierce to pick up my little niece. And prior to the letter going home, I didn't know about the letter. Her parents probably got it. They used to let us all in, but they let me in. Another parent was waiting. And when I exited, they allowed her to come in. So like he's saying, it's temporary. We're just trying to do the best we can with, with the knowledge we have and making sure that all of our children are safe and our.
And I can appreciate that. And certainly when it was novel and new and nobody knew anything, I think we were all willing to go to any lengths.
Yes, ma'am.
But now that we gather more information and the numbers are decreasing.
Our board attorney can, can tell you that if, if we have a reason to believe that we may be exposing a child or the employees to some type of danger or even unsuspecting parents that come in, we can, we can really override any of our existing policies that may prohibit that.
I would like to see that.
We can do what we have to do and even with discipline with schools. If we don't have a certain rule that addresses an action that was taken in school, we can still make up our own decisions. I mean, we're, we're a self-judicating body and have the authority to do that and the superintendent carries out these things for us.
Right. Yeah, I was reading in state statutes, like the processes and, you know, how the school boards run and all, all that. So I understand.
I mean, it's not something we want to do, but we feel it's the safest thing to do at this point.
I understand that. I, I, my question was mostly if it's a policy, was the state statute, as far as how they guide, how the policies are implemented, was that followed and when? And when you say short-term, what date is attached to ending that or what, what number? And if historically, death rates were used to guide policy, I don't know why that metric was ignored in this case.
We're not really looking at the death rate. We're looking at the infection rate and, and the number of students that are being, and staff that are being impacted by that. Our, our health coordinator, according to her data, she sees this as peaking probably by the end of January or the first part of February. So I, I see the numbers coming down in a relatively short amount of time, then I think we can see a certain degree of normalcy. But I have to, I have to respect her advice as far as what's best for the health.
I defer to her expertise.
And we, believe me, I have kids and grandkids in school and I don't want to limit their access either. But I feel the safety of our children and staff are paramount. And I want to do whatever I can in this short term to make sure that we reduce any kind of dangers to our people.
I agree with that. I feel that parents' presence sometimes for their children based on the child's needs.
And I think if you have a unique situation, I think, you know, you can have a conversation with the principal and.
Right. That's why I wanted to clarify, was it a policy or was it a recommendation?
And I think our board attorney can maybe clarify that a little bit if you want to.
Yeah, just to clarify your policy questions, the school boards are a constitutional office in the state of Florida. They've got constitutional powers that are granted to them. One of them is the protection of, of the students that are under their charge. They're allowed a broad, just like a city is allowed, they're allowed broad, broad powers to, to run things. They have, they've adopted a set of policies, which are the rules that they have to follow. The, we're not, you're not really talking about a policy that they've adopted that they're not following. You're, you're talking about parents being allowed on campus. Parents are not inherently allowed on campus. There's no policy.
Right.
That allows parents on campus.
Right.
And if a parent's disruptive, they can be trespassed from campus.
But there was a process by which that you could enter the school.
Correct. And, and so there's a process, but it's not a policy that creates that process. That poli, it's a, it's a process that's done administratively and, and each school might have slightly different rules for how they handle parents coming in and checking in, checking out. The, the school district as a whole has used its emergency powers to set up a temporary process for people, for, for parents to come into the schools. It's, it's not like you're not allowed onto the campus. They, they're, you can still pick your children up and, and go through the normal processes of that. But we're, we, they're trying to limit the spread of, of the disease. And the other thing that, that you need to kind of keep into account is when we were reading those numbers off, there's 65, I think, employees that are currently quarantined. And one of the things that we're trying to protect against is also our employees catching something and having to stay home for prolonged amounts of time. And it, you know, if we were to have a whole school get to that spot, that it creates problems for, for us administratively. So we've followed all our processes. We've, we're not breaking any policies. We're setting, we're, we're changing the things that are kind of in the smaller amount, rules that, that are not written down as to when parents are allowed on and off campuses.
And I do want to say, along with that, if, if you want to see a teacher or have a conference with a teacher, we're not limiting that as far as arranging an appointment.
I wasn't allowed to even go into the lobby or the front office. Is that the expectation?
I, I would call the principal, call the front office and, and schedule a time. Yeah, schedule a time if you wanted to meet or talk to the teacher. You know, that is certainly understandable.
And, and Mrs. Kilgore, you don't have to wait for these meetings because we only have them one this month? And just say you had missed this one and you're going to wait till February. Pick up the phone, call the superintendent. So they will get you a meeting with that person that can help you. And then you wouldn't have to wait through all of these things that, that we've gone through. I mean, they're important, but I'm just saying I'm trying to save you some time. Call.
Certainly.
Yes, ma'am. And they will, they will assist you. I promise you that.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
And that was my only question.
Yeah, thank you for.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much for your concern.
Yes. Please come back.
I will.
Anytime.
Call that principal, call the principal as.
Yeah, I love our principal. It's Ms. Beth Leary and then we have Mr. Hangle.
Yes, they're wonderful.
And I love them. So they were good and they weren't, you know, belligerent about it.
They're just wonderful.
They referenced me to the letter, so that's why I came to the source.
Yes.
Call us anytime, okay?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
Do you have any more public comments? Seeing none, go to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to pull.
Did he call on you?
Ms. Gilleyard.
He didn't have to. I was just.
Oh, you just groaned.
I was expediting.
All right. I have, it's, it's taken care. Thank you so much, sir.
I have, I have, I have nothing.
I have nothing to pull.
Ms. Pickens?
No, I don't have anything to pull. Thank you.
Anything to pull as well.
Mr. Chairman?
I'll get a motion.
Do you have anything? You said you don't have. All right, well, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none. Okay. And we don't have any other business all the way down to emergency session, right? And we have four items. Three items. Just checking if y'all are paying attention.
Yes, we're awake.
First item is an overnight trip. Kelly Smith Elementary 4-H Club, February 11th through the 12th, 2022.
That's so exciting for them.
Well, listen to you. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I thought he was done. I was going off.
Okay.
Move acceptance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving to number two. The 2021-2022 Personnel Allocation Change Number 19 and 19.1.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Personnel Recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, any discussion? Sorry.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The third emergency item is the First Amendment to Testing Site Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion that we accept this First Amendment to Testing Site Agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the First Amendment to Testing Site Agreement. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're out of that.
He's pretty quick with a hammer, isn't he?
Uh, no unfinished business. We have no new business on the agenda and we are to our reports already. Ms. Pickens, do you want to go first?
I sure will. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm just going to give a few shout-outs before I maybe start coughing on you. I'd like to congratulate some students. Nakeem Scott, who was named County Football Player of the Year by the Palaca Daily News. Also Tyler Price from Interlochen Junior Senior High School, the Runner of the Year. And Yamira Passmore, also the Female Runner of the Year from Palaca Junior Senior High School. In volleyball, congratulations to Aleni Carbahal being named All-County Player of the Year. And also Laura Vargas for being mentioned as an All-County Player. Both young ladies have been working in the Crescent City volleyball program for quite a while. I'd also like to give a shout-out to James A. Long for holding an excellent spelling bee, very competitive and exciting. And I enjoyed very much being there. And that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, I would like, excuse me, I would like to recognize Robert Bush for being named the Fall Coach of the Year. And now I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Pickens. Ms. Crawford?
Well, I also have down that I wanted to congratulate Coach Bush for the Coach of the, Coach of Fall. Is that what it was? Coach of the Year? Anyway. So some great things are happening with Palaca High School volleyball that haven't happened in a lot of years. And I think Coach Bush is very much responsible for a lot of that improvement. So very proud of him. Wow, could I be any? Um, wow, could I be any more excited about the increase in our graduation rates? Oh my goodness, I, I was giddy over that. You know, I was emotional, I was proud, and you know, the work that has been done by our students and our teachers and our support staff and our district personnel. Um, you know, it takes everyone and we have really pulled together and to me, you know, when we first started talking about this, when Rick came on board, I was like, yeah, alright, that's gonna. But it's just far surpassed everything, you know, that I, I believed would happen, so I'm thrilled about that. I am sad about the number of teachers that we have out um due to COVID and, you know, our district staffs having to, to jump in and fill in spots. I know Mandy Bernie, I got kind of tickled, she said, I've got to teach pre-K tomorrow, what am I gonna do? I said, you'll be fine, and I said, you'll just have them all in your lap and you'll be hugging them, but she got out there and they didn't need her, I think she breathed a sigh of relief. But um, uh, you know, it's just sad, cause it, just when we think things are getting better, then we get, you know, thrown another hitch. But our s- students and teachers that are in quarantine, I just, you know, I pray for them and I just hope we are still practicing um the protocol that we need to, to keep everyone safe. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gilyard?
Oh, okay, you do it your way. That's, that's all, I did it my way, that's alright with me. Okay, just congratulations to the uh teachers that came before us earlier and received uh the mini grant. It's just great things are happening, teachers are thinking outside of the box, inside of the box, and they are doing whatever is necessary to make sure that our students are excelling so that that graduation rate can become what it is. And when, when I got the text, or we got the text from the superintendent, I, I, I went back when he first talked about running. And, and usually, usually, when, when people are trying to get your vote, they say what they think you want to hear, and they say things. But he has remained tried and true, focused, that pit bull mentality, latch on to it and you don't let go. And, and so, we're, we're, we're proud and, and pleased that, that our rate is up there, that we're now number sixteen. I think is what you, see, I've been paying attention.
That, to me, that part sounds just amazing.
Sweet sixteen.
Yeah, I mean, when you go from like sixty-six.
Oh, okay, I like that, sounds like basketball talk, March Madness. Alright, and um, we have two that are retiring, Teresa Cribs, Mrs. Cribs, we want to thank you personally. Well, via this, this uh platform uh for your eighteen years and seven months of service to our students. To Ms. Courtney Carter, twenty-three years and four months, congratulations, and again, we can't thank you enough for your effort, your motivation, your desire to, to teach our children. And to the staff at Brown and Pierce, I, I, I get in line. I guess that's a sign of age, I guess, you have your little name in your, in your window so they could see the child you're picking up and they copy it down. Well, I've been in that line now enough and, and so, but they are always there, greeting the parents, smiling. I don't care what kind of day it may have been for them, in the afternoons, they're opening your back door, you know, putting your little kids in back, and it's just a pleasure. And I know Brown and Pierce isn't the only place that's happening, but since that was God's country, I just thought I'd bring it up. But I know it's happening everywhere else and, and I just appreciate it when, when we show that we care. I'm done, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Gilyard. Mr. Buckles?
Uh, I just want to reiterate something that the parent had asked earlier on and, and Mr. Taylor mentioned, we are a self-judiciating body, and if we feel like something is in the best interest of our s- school and students, we stand in place of the parent and we have to make those decisions by law. We are gr- granted that, and it's not a position of power or anything, it's strictly, you're doing the best you can, and the school may have been overwhelmed at the time and, and I just, I don't, I can't believe anybody wouldn't have time to talk to a parent unless you've been there and seen them when they're shorthanded and they don't have enough subs, so. Um, I, I know that the superintendent was, and, and Mr. Bowling will get with the principals and address it. Uh, I had a great conversation today, I've been here quite a while, but we, I, I had a conversation with the superintendent concerning concern that it has really hit me uh lately, and it, we've got more people coming through Putnam County now, and I'm not, I'm not a road counter that's sitting on DOT telling how many cars are going by, but I can tell you. I remember when Joe Pickens became our state representative and we raised the speed limit on Highway one hundred to sixty-five miles an hour. And we didn't seem to have the people moving to Florida or whatever is coming from Green Cove and coming this way. But, but people are driving so fast by QI Robert School, it is a nightmare.
And there's a lot of rats out there.
Likewise, likewise, you go to, to uh Highway twenty, right there by Kelly Smith School, and the superintendent and his staff have had nauseam gone out and tried to find better solutions to um some of the problems there, and they seem to be fairly simple if we could maybe um have the, probably the speed limit on one hundred go down at least through Putnam County five miles an hour, but I mean, looks like it takes an act of Congress, but I think that um the superintendent can get in touch with Mr. Payne or officials and, and I know his concern is the same as mine, hey, we, we discussed it. And I'd like to see him be able to look at that and look at solutions that we've discussed that come from even moving a traffic light on twenty uh adjacent to Kelly Smith. Or finding some other way to try to address the problem of the uh, because of our facility needs and having to uh roll in some population to, to get through this next series of improvements that we're stated, slated to go through to uh just keep it safe. And Rick, I, I know that's not the only place in Putnam County, so if you, if you talk with your drivers and your administrators, you know, uh you, Thomas, Randy, whoever, y'all can let us know if we need to write letters or if on behalf of us you want to send, develop a letter from the district, get Lex to help you with that on that or any other issue, and we can sign the letter as a board if the board members so choose. So I just wanted to mention that and uh, yeah, I know you're gonna work on it, but if it helps you any, I think we all need to be on board and you know, whether it's at Crescent City High or, you know, it, people just don't seem to even notice a school, it's, it's crazy.
It's mad on twenty, cause where I've been for the last thirty years, you know.
It's, it's grown and things have changed.
Oh, I have shook my finger at a lot of people.
And Highway one hundred is a nightmare, you know.
Right out here, it's little cha- traffic jams.
But be that as it may, uh, I was overjoyed on the graduation rate, that's something that near and dear to my heart, and Rick has has developed a team that is doing second to none in the state of Florida and, and working with a and I'm just gonna say it, an impoverished area to, to make excellent strides so kids will lead better lives. These, having a high school diploma or its equivalent will probably, I, I know twenty years ago meant three hundred thousand dollars more in lifetime earnings, and by now it's gotta be six to eight hundred thousand dollars more in lifetime earnings for a young person, so just let us know what we can do to help. Very, very proud of everybody and what they've done. Thank you, Nick, that's me.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. That was good.
Well, I try. Jane's watching me, she's got that eye up like that, you know.
I'll echo what every board member said already about the accomplishments. And uh also attended the uh spelling bee with James A. Long with Ms. Pickens, and it was um, there were twelve contestants, it went thirty rounds.
Wow.
I've never done it that extent, just at the countywide level, so this was different, it was just fun watching them, and the winning word was sardine.
I thought I felt sardine.
Yep, sardine, that's all I have. Mr. Taylor?
I've got a update on the opioid lawsuit, that um complaint's been filed, we are the class representative, so you know, they, they chose Putnam County because it's, if not the most uh damaged county from the opioid outbreak in, in uh Florida, it, it's real close.
That is heartbreaking.
It's, it is heartbreaking, and I'm, I'm glad we're doing something about it.
Yes.
Um, and we're starting to get a little bit of media questions um on it, so there's some chance you might get some. Um, we have briefed um statewide director for the Association of um Superintendents and for um the attorneys, so that they know too, so we may see some, some articles about that here coming soon.
Good to hear you, Jane, excuse me.
And who, who is it actually against, is it uh drug companies?
It's against a bunch of drug companies, it's not just any one, um, it's, it's, it's all of them, and there's some small settlements that are being negotiated and we might get included in those now that we have our, our uh complaint in.
Okay.
So, and we're standing in for all uh school districts in the state of Florida.
Awesome.
Good.
Thank you.
Um, speaking of that, I was asked by a member of the media about that lawsuit, and I've uh been in contact with our the attorney, y'all, y'all remember Wayne Hogan?
Mm-hmm.
Who addressed us and um.
Jacksonville?
Yeah, and he is representing us, but uh, he has asked that we defer comments to him. So uh I, I told the member of the media that I would not comment, cause it's litigation, so just be careful if you are asked something, just, you can send them to me and I'll send them to Wayne, but.
So like if a friend asks something about it, I can't say anything?
Well, I would just um refrain from talking about any litigation, especially to some, somebody in the media is what I was talking about, something that.
Oh, well, I don't know anybody in the media.
Just in case a reporter calls you up and asks you about it, cause it is statewide.
Okay.
Statewide news, so, and we are the class representatives, so you know, we may get a lot of attention about that. Um, going back to the Kelly Smith traffic situation, I, I do want everyone to know, uh, Mr. Bowling and I have met and have talked about it extensively, uh, yesterday we were on the phone with the sheriff. And um, I've also got a call in to some other folks to help us. Uh, but we are de- very much trying to mitigate that because it is a safety concern.
Is this for pickup and drop off?
Well, drop off and pickup, what, what you have is uh, you have a number of cars that are lined up on Highway twenty.
Yeah.
Uh, turning in on Round Lake Road and then turning in on Kelly Smith Road. And, you know, there's just a small window of time when that's happening, but we're, we're talking about some measures there. But again, Highway twenty is out of our jurisdiction.
Right.
But we're talking to people who uh have control over that, and uh, we're, so I just want the public to know, we are working on that, we realize that that is a concern. We are doing everything we can on the campus itself, they have a real good system on the campus.
Yeah, they do.
It goes fast, but, you know, it bleeds into other parts of the uh, of the highway, so we're working with the powers that be on that. I just want to make sure everybody knows that we're.
Plus the people that get road rage, cause they gotta wait a little minute.
Right, right. Uh, Employee of the Year is next week on the twenty-first, and um, it's gonna be, I believe, help me out, Ashley? There's been some changes to the.
This is a first I've heard of it.
It, it has been changed, um, we're hoping to do the traditional dinner style event that's due to the new COVID variant, it's gonna be the way it was held last year at Selo Octorium.
Okay, the what date and what time?
Friday the twenty-first.
Friday?
I believe it's six o'clock.
Six o'clock PM.
Right.
Um, and all the um awards will receive, any awesome white gift certificate like we did last year, so they can go with their families at a later time. Um, I know Jackie and HR have been working on getting invites out, but because of the change.
It's okay.
In the event, not having food, they're redoing the invites, and so they're trying to get everyone to sleep, so. Yeah, and they're, and they've blown them out, so this week, so.
I just want to make sure you knew about the date and also about the changes.
Yeah, I'll be out of town.
Uh, a couple of things, uh, again, thank you for the comments about the graduation rate. And all credit goes to our staff, principals, their staff, teachers and students, this is truly a district-wide effort, this is not one person, it is a system. We've put a system in place and the system is working. And again, we, you know, we don't sit back and rest on our laurels either, it is a daily battle. But we, we are very um committed to making sure those kids get across the stage. And of course, with our strategic plan and the portrait of a graduate, now it's more than just getting them across the stage, we want to make sure we give them opportunities once they cross the stage. So it is a work in progress.
Rick?
Yes, ma'am?
You're gonna be so famous, you're gonna be going to Latvia and Russia and South, you know, you're gonna be all over, not just Finland.
I hope not.
Well, it's just.
I hope he stays.
He likes to go, he likes to fly.
I know.
News about that here in a minute.
I don't like that either.
Uh, I do want to add, and you mentioned the sixteen, we, five years ago, we were ranked sixty-six out of sixty-seven. And now we're number sixteen, sweet sixteen, and that's in the top twenty-five, by the way, so.
Yeah.
So I'm very proud of that. Um, I did want to mention that uh we found some data that uh we didn't, we were calculating this when the announcement was made. But I asked our staff, actually Adam Azula ran a spreadsheet for us that shows that since two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-one, it changes every year. We are the number one district in the state for improvement over that period of time.
They need to give us something.
Let's say anything.
We've grown more, we've, we've improved thirty-seven, thirty-seven point six percented, percentage points over that period of time, that's more than any district in the state. Thanks, thanks to Adam for uh crunching those numbers. Uh, I do want to mention, this was not in the paper, uh, this was not in our announcement, it was in the paper. But I, I, I don't want people to think we're trying to hide any information, we did, we did put the school by school, high school graduation rates, all credit to them, I mean, and if you notice, if you do the math, the averages, the numbers are all above the district average. So somewhere there's gonna about, there has to be some numbers u- under that average. But I did want to mention that um, the um Putnam Edge had a sixty-six point seven percent graduation rate, I believe that came up from last year. Uh, E.H. Miller had a seventy-two point seven percent, and Putnam Virtual had an eighty-two point six percent. So I, I didn't want to leave them out.
Right, thank you for bringing that up, cause I think they had their feelings hurt a little bit with Putnam Virtual.
I understand, and we, we want to give them credit too, and, and again, all that comes together for that ninety-two point five percent graduation rate as a district. And also want to remind you that uh Thursday night, this Thursday night, I was talking to Ms. Gilyard about it, the thirteenth at six PM, we're having our second district-wide community forum, we're gonna be based out of Crescent City Junior Senior High School. That is gonna be a, a live event, however, we are making that available uh via virtual. And there is a uh, a link, Ashley, jump in anytime, but it's on our website, our social media, where you can click on there, you can send in questions.
So we can watch it?
You can watch it, and we'll have our staff available to answer questions, but I thought the first one went very well. And again, I want to stress, we don't have all the answers, but we're trying to be as transparent as we can and say, hey, that's a good question, we may not have the answer, but we're working on it.
I was gonna say, you'll find the answer.
We'll find it, so, Ashley, anything else you want to add to that?
If anyone is interested in attending, um, please take a few minutes to do the survey that'll be available from ten to nine. If we, just a quick two questions, give us ideas or topics, so that we can have time to prepare full data tomorrow, Thursday, Friday evening.
And that's attending either in person or virtually.
You can do either, Sam, if, if you come in person, we will do socially distance in the cafeteria, and we will have, um, we have Spanish-speaking families who would like to attend, we will have someone there to translate.
Also, today, we held our, what, third uh student advisory, our superintendent student advisory today, again, that was virtual.
Where was it? Oh, virtual, sorry.
It was virtual. But I tell you, every time we do that, I, I'm just walking on air, because those kids really are, it's, it's good to hear.
Sharp, they're so smart, they're sharp.
And they are really uh so mature and so honest, you know, but we're doing our book study, and today we talked about the portrait of a graduate, you know, and we, when we had that and Ashley helped facilitate it. But we talked about, hey, how good a, a job are we doing with this? Tell us about it. And we had them really talking honest to us, and I, I think it really resonated that, you know, what, what you guys have approved is really working. And those students are telling us, yeah, we have a lot of room, a lot of room for improvement, but I, I think they really appreciate the fact that we are listening to them, and, you know, we still have a lot of things we need to work on, but I think they re- they reckon. Yeah, we still have a lot of things we need to work on, but I think they they recognize that we're listening to the student voice.
Right, and and it and it lets them know that we are trying to do things to improve their situation, their education, their life. You know, when you present them with these things.
And it's important, they have a seat, they have a seat at the table.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think at some point in time, when you know, the COVID thing dies down some, we'll have them come in and I'm sure. They'll have some things they want to say to you too, you know, so I think that'll be a good idea. Finally, and I think I can identify with the parent that came in today, but as she was talking, I got an email that my Finland trip was delayed. So.
Rick, again?
For his safety, again is good.
Delayed till when?
Don't know yet, don't know yet, but they they have the same thing, they're limiting access to their schools, I was going to visit schools over there, so they're limiting access like we are, so.
Yeah.
I respect that, I mean, I'm very disappointed.
When were you supposed to leave?
I was supposed to leave uh the twenty-third of January, but.
It'll happen one day.
I got me a nice big coat though, I'll be, I'm ready. So anyway, I'll let you know about it, but I I am disappointed, but I want to make sure you knew about it, and it, maybe it'll happen later in the spring, but anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, is there anything else we need to address? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Bang your.
Hit that, boom, there you go.